Like to call the regular meeting of the Housing Authority to order, please. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Agency members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Vice Chair Perez.
Here.
And Chair Ayella.
Here.
There are two consent items for consideration. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar items? Can I have a roll call, please?
Agency members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Hernandez.
I abstain, item number 083.
Vice Chair Perez.
Aye.
And Chair Ayella.
Aye, Community Development Directors report. Do we have a report?
No report.
No report? Okay. Okay, we have a card for world communications. Lashima Swafford, please come to the podium.
Oh, well, my name is Lashima Swafford. I'm coming here about the discriminatory tactics that the Housing Authority used towards African-American disabled clients that's receiving assistance. They continue to say that it's because the funding is being cut, but to my knowledge, no funding is being cut for a citizen, a working citizen, or disabled citizen. It's a lot of foreign stuff that's being cut and changed, and I would just like to be treated like a citizen and receive the benefits that's entitled to me for being disabled and not let people, personal, political, who they vote for, make them retaliate against me as a citizen because they don't like what's going on with the foreign policy and they have the power to afflict me behind it. I don't want to suffer behind that, and in Norwalk, I feel that I'm suffering greatly behind that with all the services because our neighbors shoot, they shoot at the windows, the police don't do anything, they come and they break in our mailboxes, the police don't do anything, the post office don't do anything. It's like we're being terrorized and the police will come out and say, "Oh, it's due to funding cut, we can't help." Excuse me, why are you even at work then? That does not even make sense. If you're funded to be here, that means you're funded to do your job. You can't give us an excuse, "Oh, Trump is cutting this and Trump is doing that so we can't..." What? That doesn't even make sense. And I just don't want to continue to suffer and have Housing Authority use all the discriminatory tactics that they use that I have documentation to prove, falsifying move-in reports, falsifying... What is that? Building code inspectors' reports and cahoots with owners of passing inspections that they know the government would fail and not pass just to get certain entities' funding. I am suffering and I don't want to suffer. I don't want to deal with it. I feel you guys should be addressing it and stopping it from happening because I'm a citizen, I work, and I'm disabled, and I'm an African-American. I'm not affected by no foreign policy, and I'm tired of the excuse of them telling me and all these entities, from the officers to the housing to post office, everything in Norwalk, that they can't do anything because of the political funding cuts being done to the foreign policies and foreign funding. I'm not foreign. I'm an American citizen.
Thank you. My expectation would be that you wouldn't be discriminated against or any other resident of Norwalk. I'm going to ask the city manager to put some information for us regarding some of these issues and please share it with myself and my colleagues.
Yes, we'll provide you with the information.
Thank you very much. If there's no one else wishing to speak, you're going to be adjourned out of our Housing Authority meeting. Anybody else? Please come forward. This is for Housing. Okay. Ready? Then we're adjourned from Housing. All right. Okay, the regular meeting in Norwalk City Council and the Norwalk Community Facilities Financing Authority are now called to order. This evening, we are honored to welcome Pastor Michael Gutierrez of Redeemer Covenant Church here in Norwalk. Pastor Michael has been serving as pastor for seven years. He is passionate about reaching out to the community with a message of love and faith. He enjoys watching sports, enjoying local food, and spending time with his family. Following the invocation, we're delighted to be joined by Isabella Isok, a fourth grader at Morrison Elementary School, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Isabella enjoys playing with dolls, drawing, reading, and is a big Taylor Swift fan. Her favorite things about Norwalk include attending the recreation summer camp, visiting Town Square, and watching movies at the AMC Theaters. Pastor Michael Gutierrez and Isabella, please come to the front to lead us, and afterwards we'll all take a big photo together.
Good evening, everyone. Would you pray with me? Dear God, I thank you for this great city of Norwalk. I thank you for the residents who live here, God. I thank you for the elected officials that you have placed in their seats. God, I thank you for the first responders who serve our community and the businesses in our community, God. There are so many great things in this community, and I lift them up to you, God. I give them to you, and I ask that you would work, Lord. Lord, I pray that for tonight's city council meeting, that you would have a unified city council, that they would be unified around what is best for the citizens and residents who live here, God, and that they would seek to serve, Lord, seek to serve their community, seek to serve one another, God, and that you would bless them with wisdom, with discernment, God, with knowledge on the best ways to go, the best decisions to make, God. And I pray that you continue to provide in all the ways that you have provided so that the city of Norwalk will prosper, God. We thank you, Lord, and we lift this city council meeting up to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Isabella, are you there?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Isabella. City Clerk, can I have a roll call, please?
As I'm calling for both agencies, I'll just use both titles. Council members, agency members Ramirez.
Here.
Rios.
Here.
Valencia.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice President Perez.
Here.
And Mayor, President Ayella.
Here. Okay, minutes of the NCFFA June 18th, 2019 are on the agenda for approval. Is there a motion? In a second. Okay, Mr. Boyd, roll call, please.
Agency members Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia.
Aye.
Vice President Perez.
Aye.
And President Ayella.
Okay, then the NCFFA is recessed until item number 10. Can I get a closed session report, Mr. Glassman?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The record should reflect the city council with, for the members present. Councilmember Valencia joined in open session. The three items that were listed on the open session, I'm sorry, in closed session were announced for discussion. The city council recessed in a closed session to discuss those three items. All those three items were reviewed by the city council, but there is no reportable action on any of those three matters. That concludes my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Come to city council comments. Councilmember Ramirez, please.
No comments this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rios.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone, to our meeting today. Just a couple of things. First, I want to remind everyone that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and so I hope that all of you are taking this time to prioritize your health, get those mammograms, get those physical examinations by your medical provider, just to make sure that you make your health a priority, not just in the month of October, but hopefully year-round, and that you remember to support those that are, have, or are currently struggling with the disease of cancer, which kind of leads me to Paint the Town Pink, which is something a wonderful endeavor that the city of Norwalk has taken on since 2018. And tomorrow, Chick-fil-A, our Chick-fil-A here in the city of Norwalk, is participating in the fundraiser to raise funds for cancer awareness, the American Cancer Society. So please, lunch or dinner or breakfast, 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Chick-fil-A here in Norwalk. Just mentioned that you are there to support the Paint the Town Pink and all of our efforts going towards cancer awareness. The other thing I wanted to mention was last Friday, I did accept an invitation from Pastor Michael for his banquet, fundraising banquet there at the Redeemer Covenant Church, and it was very special to me to see how they are working with our youth and our high schools. And so at the high school level, they're working with youth to encourage them, you know, to have faith, to know that there's a community that supports them and their efforts. And so they had three young students from, I believe it was Santa Fe High, and they spoke about their experience. So quite honestly, the banquet was very, very nice. It was nice to reconnect or meet new people, and they had a really nice dinner from Mom's cosina that they catered. But for me, the highlight of the evening was listening from three young students who are relying on not just having a sense of community, but that they have faith and that they have hope and that they know that they're supported and loved. And I think that was, that was really heartwarming to hear. Like I said, it was a highlight of my evening there. And so that kind of leads me into my next comment, specifically talking about youth and why it is so important that we support our young people. And I'm really proud of the work that the city of Norwalk does because we have several programs, many programs, and we have a dedicated staff that works in our parking wrecks, that works with our public safety, et cetera. And I know that I've always been a youth advocate, and so it really is great to know that the city of Norwalk is prioritizing youth. And I mention that because today, the LA County Supervisor's Office, during their meeting, were discussing Men's Central Jail. Do we close it? Are we keeping it open? How do we fund it? Et cetera. And so I can tell you, I don't have the answers. I have an opinion. I'll keep that to myself, but I will share that based on my experience, you catch them when they're young. That's my personal and professional experience because I've been in law enforcement for now 30 years, specifically working with young people, my dream job. And so I can tell you from personal and professional experience that you need to catch them when they're young to avoid that school-to-prison pipeline that people talk about. And so the fact that the city of Norwalk has different programs that support, encourages, uplifts, has opportunities for leadership, has opportunities for employment, has opportunities for civic engagement and volunteerism, let me tell you, we're behind that 1,000% because we have to get them when they're young. And so I just wanted to share that and just thank our staff for everything that they do with our young people and know that they're at the forefront of our priorities here in the city of Norwalk because we know that we're laying the foundation and the base for the future. We really, really are, and it does take a village, it takes a community to make sure that our young people grow up to be good civic-minded people, just good people. That's my wish for them, that they grow up to be good people, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Very poignant. Appreciate those comments. Councilmember Valencia, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say that it was wonderful to attend the Arturo Sanchez 40th Halloween Parade. It was fantastic. All staff did a great job in making this all happen. It was a fantastic parade, a fantastic event, and the crowd was out there all over, just enjoying it, and of course, we enjoy it. And I think all of us were there, city council members were there, including our city manager and Ozzy, and everybody was there. Just, it was, it was a great job, so thank you to all of our staff, wonderful as always, and then some for this 40th annual. And of course, the Sanchez family did a great job as well. I want to also mention, I hadn't had a chance to go and visit the exhibition that they have at our Norwalk Arts and Sports Complex, but I believe Mr. Sanchez told me that they're going to be, that the exhibition will be there till the 25th, so we still have some time to go and look at the, over the years, the parade and just the different, the different things that, and the assets that the Sanchez family have brought to Norwalk. You know, it is a great partnership, and I'm sure that the bands who received checks that day were, were very pleased. And just, I think, I don't know, I don't know if it was just me, but there seemed to be a little bit more bands this time around. And quality, oh my God, the outfits and the synchronization that they had was fantastic. So it was, it was very much enjoyed, and I do look forward to, to the Halloween activities that we're going to have, and I'm sure they're going to be a blast, so I look forward to attending those. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I do have a few things to report out on. The first one is the annual conference for the League of California Cities. It was held this year in Long Beach, so I traveled to and from the Long Beach Convention Center each day, had a great, great time learning, networking, and really communicating with other leaders in cities around the area to really see what they're doing, what's working, what's not working, how can we work together. We talked about the trust in your elected officials. We talked about grant opportunities that are bringing, you know, coming to our cities and how we can apply for those, centralizing communications. We were in a communications session, and I got several comments that said the city of Norwalk is doing things correctly when it comes to their social media and communicating with their residents. So Levy and team, you got lots of kudos. People are watching what we're doing on social media. I also wanted to shout out for an award that we received. I'm not going to give it out away. I'm not going to give all the info out, but they'll be coming to city council in a meeting very, very soon. And Margarita, I think you're going to be extremely proud of what we won and for what topic we won it for. So just stay tuned. There's going to be lots of information and celebratory moments coming in the near future. Huge, wonderful day with the Halloween Parade. Thank you to the entire community for coming out, all of our businesses, our sponsors, the entire team, our chamber, everybody that was there. It was definitely a great, great afternoon. I attended the St. Linus Annual Fiesta, got lots of comments from the community on how excited they are about what is happening in the city of Norwalk and what we are doing and where we are going. They love hearing about the future development, and they love seeing the new streets, the signs, everything, so it was great to be there with everybody. I did attend the California Contract Cities Monthly Meeting last week, and thank you for those that were there with us from the city of Norwalk. I attended a woman in leadership meeting dinner last week where we learned to really prioritize ourselves as much as we can. We, sitting here at this desk, we do so much, all of us together, here in the city and the various boards that we're on and associations, but no matter what, we all have to remember that if we don't take care of ourselves, we can't be there to take care of everybody else. So it's always a hard lesson, a hard lesson to remember. And I just want to congratulate the entire team and our mayor on a wonderful state of the city last week. We had a full room of business owners, community members, our team, several businesses that we work with and partner with, and Mayor, it was a great job. I got comments that it was one of the best, and from your leadership, thank you for that. I think it really was a great, great afternoon. And that is all I have tonight, Mayor, and happy Halloween to everyone.
Very good. Thank you. But Councilmember Valencia had mentioned, reminded me of something from the Arturo Sanchez Halloween Parade is that we had almost twice as many bands as we did the year before, and many of them were middle school bands. They weren't even high school bands. Yeah, and so I was very impressed because I thought they were high school bands because of the way they performed, and they were actually middle school bands. And I know that's an all-hands-on-deck event, you know, with, with recreation and public safety and public services and, you know, all our admins out there and whatnot, so I just want to thank everybody for making that a success. Want to thank the Sanchez family because, you know, after the parade, there's like, all our staff has to dash over to Hermosillo Park because there's another hour and a half of giving awards to the bands. They gave out $15,000 in scholarships, and there's an entire second program after the main parade. And I say that in recognition of, of the Sanchez family and everyone, but also in recognition of our staff because, like I said, once the parade's done, then they have to hustle over there and do part two. But this thing clearly wouldn't exist without the, without the Sanchez family. I can say that I've actually participated in every one of the Sanchez parades since it first started, and it's come a long way. And so thank you to, thank you to the staff and everybody on, you know, that helped make that successful. Okay, we're going to check presentation, American Cancer Society Relay for Life, because everybody knows this is October and this is Breast Cancer Month. The city of Norwalk is proud to support the American Cancer Society. Each year, city employees participate in the Relay for Life campaign by donating funds during Jeans Friday. Our staff contribute in exchange for the opportunity to wear jeans to work. This brings together employees from every department to make a collective impact. Tonight, on behalf of the Norwalk City Council and city staff, we are honored to announce that the city council, Norwalk employees, raised $3,000 to donate to the American Cancer Society. Additionally, I'd like to invite Rosie LaZoya from our Recreation and Parks Services Department to share a brief background about the city's continued partnership with the American Cancer Society through our annual Paint the Town Pink campaign. Rosie, please come forward.
Hello. Hello, Mayor and council members.
Hello.
And everyone here tonight. I just wanted to talk about, just a little bit about how here in the city of Norwalk, we are giving, we're giving back as part of it. Each October, also here for Paint the Town Pink, we have a month-long initiative where we provide fundraising activity every Wednesday, and don't forget, she said Chick-fil-A, but we partner up. During Paint the Town Pink, our city and Norwalk employees and local businesses reinforce weekly for fundraisers, including partnerships with Chick-fil-A, Shaky, Botley, where portions of the proceeds for our support for breast cancer awareness are provided and goes to those causes. We also have Churro Day, churro sales, coffee sales, ice cream sales, and most of those fundraisers also go for cancer awareness. Last but not least, we also have, as I already mentioned, the Jean Day in Jersey since... Serious? Throwing that out there, Jesus? You'll also see that our city has light poles, pink ribbons at the light poles, our employees' uniforms symbolizing our community commitment for early detection and prevention. We're proud that the city of Norwalk, who work every day, they show up for our community, and together we build the tradition of compassion, teamwork, and action to continue. So besides the $3,000 after Paint the Town Pink, we hope to be handing another check, $3,000.
I'm not surprised you're in the middle of this, Rosie, because if you've been around the city of Norwalk for very long, anytime there's a lot of work going on at events, at recreation events or wherever, right in the middle of it, you'll see Rosie, and she'll be the one that's working the hardest out of everybody. So what we're going to do, Rosie, is at this time, we're going to present a check in the amount of $3,000 to the American Cancer Society and... the amount of $3,000 to the American Cancer Society in support of breast cancer awareness and research. Thank you to everyone who has been demonstrating the spirit of compassion and community that defines Norwalk. Let's welcome representatives from the American Cancer Society to the front to accept this check and join us for a group photo in recognition of their tireless work to advance cancer research, patient support, and education. Council?
Thank you.
Mayor and council members, if I may, as you're taking the picture, I'll just make a couple of comments that the Fridays that we, we are open here, it is an opportunity for employees to donate, to wear jeans on that Friday. So we're making awareness every, every month, every week that, that we work here on Fridays. So we want to make sure that employees get recognized for their efforts. And we really champion wearing jeans on Fridays because we, we pay to, to fundraise to be able to wear jeans. So, thank you.
Rosie, I don't know if I've seen Jesus in jeans on Friday, but I hope you're still collecting five bucks from him anyways. Right?
Our second item, we are recognizing Siaka for its 50th anniversary. City proudly recognizes the Southeast Area Animal Control Authority on its 50th anniversary. Since 1975, Siaka has provided critical animal care and control services to multiple cities, including Norwalk. Their team works tirelessly to reunite families with their pets, facilitate adoptions, and ensure the welfare of animals throughout the, throughout the region. On behalf of the Norwalk City Council, we extend our gratitude to Siaka for five decades of dedicated service and compassion to the community. Now, therefore I, Tony Ayala, Mayor of the city of Norwalk, on behalf of Vice Mayor Jennifer Perez and Councilmembers Rick Ramirez, Margarita El Rios, and Anna Valencia, do hereby recognize the Southeast Area Animal Control Authority for its 50 years of outstanding service to Norwalk and the region. Let's welcome representatives from Siaka to the front to accept this recognition and join us for a great group photo. Okay, now we move to city managers' comments. Mr. Gomez, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Couple of items that I wanted to just mention. Breast cancer awareness is, is very well and alive in, in our family. I have a sister who's a survivor. And so I'm proud to be part of the fundraising efforts, part of the program that we have here in Norwalk. And I can tell you that the city does all it's, all it can to be able to raise awareness. And so I just want to thank the council and the community, the, also the, the employees who participate in all the fundraising efforts and the awareness. Also, want to provide a great thanks to our staff. State of the City was a really well-executed event, in my opinion. And we were able to have the showcasing of what has happened in the city, what is coming to the city. And I think it's one of the, one of the events that provides us the opportunity to help our residents and those that participate understand our city much, much better. And most of all, our sponsors who are very generous to sponsor the event and also attend the event. So want to thank them as well. Including, you know, the, the fact that we're able to see some of our former employees now, you know, you, wearing the sheriff's uniform. And, you know, that just, you know, makes me really proud that they, they're part of, were part of the Public Safety Department and now they're with the Sheriff's Department. So Diego, I'm proud of you seeing him in the, in the uniform. Also, the Arturo Sanchez Parade, great, great event. I think it was well-attended. I, I probably have attended about 15 parades and it, it looked and felt the most well-attended parade this year. So I'm glad it was because it was the 40th anniversary. And I did get to see the, the exhibit. And the exhibit is well-done. Alan, you know, let your staff know. I mean, very classy, very, very nicely done. And of course, they've had, they had to select items from all of the collection that they have. They had to select the items that they wanted to display and I think it was, it was done very, very well. With that, we have the Halloween Parade 2025 recap video for the community to see and for us to look and remember what it was like a week ago. Thank you. Play.
Welcome to the city of Norwalk's Arturo Sanchez Senior 40th Annual Halloween Parade.
Who's ready for some Halloween fun?
It was a spooktacular day in Norwalk as the community gathered for the 40th Annual Arturo Sanchez Senior Halloween Parade. For four decades, this Norwalk tradition has brought families, friends, and neighbors together, celebrating community pride with a touch of Halloween magic.
Happy Halloween, Norwalk!
From showstopping marching bands to dazzling floats and creative community entries, this year's parade had it all. And after 40 years of clowning around, the fun just keeps getting better.
I'm just amazed to see how many people turned out, the bands, all the groups that came in. It was one of, I have to say, it was one of the best Halloween parades that I've seen for a long, long time. And I've seen plenty. And I hope everybody enjoyed it.
Happy Halloween, Norwalk!
Before the parade began, families showed off their Halloween best at the annual costume contest. And the most creative costumes earned special prizes for their spirit and style. With music, laughter, and plenty of treats along the way, Norwalk celebrated another unforgettable year of Halloween fun.
It was an epic day today at Hermosillo Park when we finished off the 40th Annual Arturo Sanchez Parade. Big milestone, historical, hallmark. And it was a great success. The double the number of bands typically participate, participated this year and more people and more fun and it was a great day. And thanks to the foundation, the Sanchez Foundation, the city of Norwalk, the Recreation Department, and everybody that made this event possible.
Thank you to everyone who made the 40th Annual Arturo Sanchez Senior Halloween Parade a success. Here's to 40 years of fun, community, and yes, a little more clowning around.
And again, thank you to the Arturo family. Family members came from out of state for the exhibit and, and for the parade. So just want to thank them for being so involved with the parade. Next, we have the bi-weekly video and that is all the activities that have happened here in Norwalk. And again, there are more to come in the season, so please stay tuned. And you're always welcome to participate in all our events. So here, just a taste of what has happened. But there's the next season. Here we go.
The Recreation and Park Services Department Teen Alliance Program, or TAP, was selected to receive the Helen Putnam Award at the Cal Cities Conference on Wednesday, October 8. The purpose of the award is to recognize and promote the outstanding efforts and innovative solutions by city governments. Norwalk's Teen Alliance Program empowers youth ages 13 to 18 through community service, leadership, and skill building, offering volunteer hours, monthly meetings, and community projects that enhance skills while benefiting the community. On October 17th, the city hosted its annual State of the City event. Norwalk residents, business representatives, and local officials gathered to reflect on the city's progress and look ahead to the future of our community. Karen Spilsbury of the Norwalk Chamber of Commerce and Captain Richard Conti of the Norwalk Sheriff's Department were all in attendance as guest speakers. Thank you to everyone who attended and helped us celebrate our community.
Mayor and council members, that concludes my, the city manager's report.
Thank you. Okay, there are seven items on the consent counter for consideration.
Second.
Teresa, is there anybody wanting to speak on the consent counter specifically, do you know?
I believe most of those cards there are all for oral communications. I don't think there's anybody for consent.
Yeah, I think you're right. All right. Do we have that roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios. Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Okay, do we have anybody with appointments? The advisory bodies. The nun, item nine. Ordinance number 25-1760, amending Title 15, Buildings in Construction of Norwalk Municipal Code related to electric vehicle charging, which sets forth an expedited streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. Staff report, please.
Yes. Mayor members of the city council, we have our building official who will present, Ms. Faye Yon, and she will present the staff report. And this, this is following up on state law for EV charging stations. And we, we hope to get more infrastructure in the city as we build more projects. We know we're going to need more, more of this infrastructure. So with that, Ms. Faye will present.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Tonight, I'm presenting an ordinance that will update the Norwalk Municipal Code to comply with Assembly Bill 1236. This ordinance establishes a streamlined and expedited permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. As background, Assembly Bill 1236, as in 2015, requires all cities with fewer than 200,000 residents to adopt a streamlined permitting ordinance for electric vehicle charging stations. This legislation was later strengthened by AB 970 in 2021 and AB 1291 in 2022, further clarified the responsibilities of local jurisdictions. This overall goal of this laws and our ordinance is to encourage EV adoption, reduce our reliance on fossil oil, and ensure public safety by providing a clear and consistent permitting process. The draft ordinance adds clear installation standards for electric vehicle charging stations. It also requires the city to provide a checklist to public which identifies all the necessary requirements and help applicants move through the permitting process more quickly and consistently. Finally, the ordinance mandates that applications can be submitted electronically, making the process more accessible, efficient, and in line with our current technology. As part of the ordinance, the city will adopt a clear checklist for applicants. This checklist outlines the full permitting application and submittal process along with the specific information required for plan review. It also includes sample details that applicants can use as references and explains the inspection process to, so the expectations are clear upfront. By providing this checklist, we make sure the process is more transparent, consistent, and easier for the applicants to follow. In order to use this checklist, applicants need to verify that their project will have no potential negative impact to public health and safety. Once a complete submittal that meets the checklist requirement is provided, the application can be processed right away. This ensures that the plan review and permit issuance are completed in an expedited manner. Additionally, applications and plans may be submitted electronically, which save time for both applicants and staff for plan review process. This ordinance is exempt from CEQA because it has no potential to create a physical environmental impact. It also supports the city's strategic plan goal for, which supports sustainability and climate resilience throughout the community. Overall, this ordinance encourages electric vehicle use, aligns the city with the state mandates, and protects public health by making zero emission transportation more accessible to our community. In conclusion, staff recommends the city council introduce by Title Only Ordinance Number 25-1760 and Ordinance Amending Title 15 of Norwalk Municipal Code to establish an expedited and streamlined process, process for electric vehicle charging station and wait for the rating and schedule for adoption. With that said, this concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Devois, are there any cards that you have or contacts you have? Anybody want to speak on that?
I do not have any additional cards.
Yeah, I don't either. Okay, council, any comments, questions on this?
I'll move the item.
Okay, could I have a roll call, please, Teresa?
Councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perez.
Aye.
And Mayor Ayala.
Aye. Item 10, Resolution Number 25-50 and Resolution Number NCFFA-24, approving an amendment and restated parking agreement. Staff report, please.
We'll be reconvening the NCFFA now so that we can hear the report together.
Okay. So we're making official, so we're now reconvening the NCFFA for this joint item.
So this item will be for both bodies?
Correct.
Great. Mayor Members of City Council, Mr. Alex Hamilton will present.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, as a bit of background on this item, in 1995, the city and county of Los Angeles entered into a long-term ground lease agreement for the Norwalk Civic Center parking garage, also known as the lease agreement. The county leased the parking structure parcel to facilitate the development and operation of the structure. Also, in 1995, a site sublease was entered into by the city as sublassor and Norwalk Community Facilities Financing Authority, the NCFFA, as the sublassee. That's why you have the joint item before you this evening. Here's an outline of the Civic Center Garage location. A multi-level parking structure and pedestrian bridge was developed and the city continues to operate. The city, the NCFFA, the theater developer, and the AMC are parties to a parking agreement as amended. The city granted the theater development and AMC certain non-exclusive rights, utilize the parking spaces in the parking structure and the City Hall surface parking area. The city and Prime Store entered into a ground lease as amended for the development and construction of a mixed-use development known as the WALK. The city, NCFFA, theater developer, and AMC desire to amend and restate the parking agreement. The amended and restated parking agreement does the following, and I'll outline some of the key points of what it does. This is a lot of text to read, but basically I'll stick with the highlights on that. And the important thing here to keep in mind is this lease amendment is necessary to effectuate both the WALK project and to further clarify the roles and responsibilities of all the tenants from the AMC to the county and the city. As a bit of background on this, number or item A is part of the lease, allows for Prime Store's rights to take over operation and maintenance of the parking structure. Prime Store has the right to take over the parking structure operations and maintenance called O and M. Costs for O and M are currently borne by the city. If Prime Store elects to take over the O and M, the cost will be determined under a management agreement between the city and Prime Store to be negotiated and entered into later. The city would continue to receive parking revenue from the structure. The theater parking study and potential for exclusive parking, this section addresses the ability for AMC Theater, there's mention of 500 parking spaces reserved for the AMC Theater. At this point, it doesn't look like that number, that's a guarantee that has to be made to AMC, doesn't look like we ever get close to that number. Should the theater feel like that number, we're getting very close to it, there'll be a parking study that'll be required between all parties to justify that number and all the other usage in the garage. That would happen at a future date should the conditions warrant. Also, as mentioned, it allows for a maximum of 500 exclusive theater parking spaces during the hours of operation. The number of exclusive parking spaces would be limited to the number, as I said, justified in a future parking study but will not exceed 500 spaces. And the theater parking would be paused per the terms of this lease if the theater complex ceases operations for 90 days, consecutive days, and would resume once operations restart. The intent there is if the theater, we hope not, but if the theater goes dark, then the rights to that parking would temporarily seize until such time as theater operations resume. If exclusive theater parking is triggered, the city is to be allocated 250 non-exclusive parking spaces between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and between the hours of 6:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on Fridays under the parking plan. This language addresses the city staff's concern regarding the need to call out parking for city businesses. Here's a map of the area. The area in green depicts the public parking structure, the Civic Center Garage that we're referring to, while the area in the reddish burgundy color is the site of the WALK future project, which will consist of approximately 100,000 square feet of commercial, up to 350 residential units, and a seven-level parking structure right behind City Hall, and City Hall is shown in yellow on this map. One of the key points in why this is so critical at this juncture is this parking amendment is necessary for Prime Store as they begin the lease-up phase of the WALK project. They will be soon announcing publicly many of the tenants that they've secured letters of intent with or commitments with. It's an exciting list. This is necessary to that Prime Store has this document to demonstrate that their tenants will have parking. And one of the provisions in the parking lease is that the ground floor of the Civic Center Garage is envisioned to serve as some parking for the Prime Store, for the WALK customers. Under the Environmental Review Section of this, the city council finds that the amended and restated parking agreement is categorically exempt pursuant to CEQA as the activity will not have a significant effect on the environment for Section 15301 Class 1 existing facilities. Also, the common sense exemption applies as it can be seen with certainty that there's no possibility that the amended and restated parking agreement may have a significant impact on the environment. This is a lot of text also to read as I read the recommendation that staff has. Staff recommends that the city council and the NCFFA find that the amended and restated parking agreement is categorically exempt pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the, from the sections that I stated forthwith, and that you adopt Resolution Number 2550, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Norwalk, approving an amended and restated parking agreement, and that you authorize the city manager to execute the amended and restated parking agreement and any documents under the terms of the agreement and any such ancillary documents and any additional amendments, provided there is funding in the budget in a form approved by the city attorney. This concludes my presentation. Would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Teresa, are there any persons wishing to speak on this on a card that you may have that I do not?
I don't have any speaker cards, but as a point of clarification, you're also going to be voting on NCFFA, Resolution Number NCFFA-24 at the same time.
Correct. Okay, council, any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Agency members, councilmembers Ramirez.
Aye.
Rios.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, Vice President Perez.
Aye.
Mayor and Perez, President Ayala.
Aye.
Thank you.
At this point, the NCFFA is adjourned, and we will move to oral communications. Could I have Al Archuleta, please?
This is kind of a eulogy for the Keystone Lanes from a Norwalk old timer. That's me, Al Archuleta. I was there in 1955 at the age of eight when excavating started for the new Norwalk Bowling Center, which later was called Keystone Lanes. I returned last week, Wednesday, October 15th, to see the end of the demolition, which started a few days earlier. Gone is the bowling alley itself, banks, billiards, the bar, the karaoke lounge, and remember Lamp Post Pizza? My brother's favorite pizza. He lives in New Mexico now, but he still remembers Lamp Post Pizza. The 50s was the era of big, big cars, big houses, and big radio. All the oldies you hear on satellite radio now, like starting with Elvis and anything else, all started back then. They were new songs then, now they're oldies, and we still listen. And then, of course, the big 48-lane Norwalk Bowling Center, a real milestone in this city. Then the years that hosted, I'm sorry, Keystone Lanes hosted many, many tournaments, some on TV, and generations of Norwalk people worked there. Many leagues were there. I went there sometimes just to sit down and watch the people bowl and have a drink or something. So I wish, oh, and I want to do say that diversity was a thing at the Norwalk Bowling Center. People came from all over, not just Norwalk people or the local cities. They came from everywhere. I never saw so much diversity. And it lasted up, all up until the last day, which was Sunday, June the first, their official last day. I don't have information on the first day. I don't remember that. I know it opened in 1955. May I wish all the many employees that were there that worked in the bar, wherever they worked, what a great staff you were. I wish you continued success. I met a few of you that day or the few days I kept going to the bowling alley. And I wish Norwalk well as it transforms Keystone into a much-needed housing. Here's to another great 70 years. And may I say that part of the legacy and history of Norwalk, California will always be remembered with the great, dearly departed Keystone Lanes. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Welcome. Thank you.
I know what you're talking about. I grew up two blocks behind the Keystone Lane. Next speaker is Brittany Spears.
My name is Brittany Spears, and I'm here to ask what actions the city of Norwalk is taking to implement the LA County State of Emergency that was declared on October 14th regarding the ICE raids. Since the Chirla Know Your Rights event, Know Your Rights event on September 17th, I haven't seen any further communication or follow-up from the city. That was over a month ago, and community members still need resources and updates since that event, because since that event, there have been at least two ICE kidnappings in this city. I was looking through the city's Instagram and noticed the post on community resources and feel it missed a major opportunity to include Know Your Rights information, either as an additional slide or as a recap of the Chirla event for those who couldn't attend. That kind of content is critical right now. I'm also deeply concerned about the recent kidnappings reported by the community and not the city near the Home Depot and on, at the Home Depot and on Flollen Avenue. There has been no clear communication from the city about these incidents, and if something was shared, I didn't see it, and I'm online constantly. And that means that probably others missed it too, if there was actually communication about it. I understand that the city recently paid Marino Group $100,000 for crisis communication support. I'd like to see that investment used to improve public communication regarding the ICE kidnappings and how the community can protect themselves through social media, mailers, or door hangers, especially during emergencies like the one we are in now and the one that LA County finally recognized. I would like to see the city of Norwalk doing more to follow through on the LA County Emergency Declaration and making sure residents are being kept informed and protected unless performative gestures such as this. This is a mural that I'm supposed to pay tribute to deported veterans, and this is Tonya Ayala next to it. That is all. Thank you.
Can we have, I guess it's Andy G. Come forward, please.
I'm here to just ask some simple questions. Who are you serving? Why are you here? I thought a city council is meant to serve the residents of their city. You're the Norwalk City Council. You're here to serve the residents of Norwalk City to make sure that essential services are provided, that the city is functioning, and ensure the safety of all those living in this city. And if that's what you think you're here doing, and that you think you are, well, you're failing, okay? Week after week, you continue to come and ask for protection, demand for action to be taken, and plead for resources for those residents that are affected by the ongoing ICE raids. Just this week, several people were kidnapped at a Home Depot. There continues to be actions weekly. One neighborhood has been targeted twice in the past few months, and at this point, we're past vague statements, we're past reminders of people's rights. At this point, we need to know where do you stand on this, because your silence is telling us all we need to know. You're not saying anything. You're saying that you're okay with residents being taken, with residents being kidnapped, and we know where they go. We know what is the next step after this. They go to those detention camps, to those centers where people continue to die, where people are either taking their own life because of the circumstances there or not receiving the proper needed medical attention. So that is the next stop. By not protecting residents here, that's where it is leading to. Other cities continue to take strong actions. They put out statements saying that they are not in support of what's happening, that they want to protect their residents. Chicago, proactively, before the federal government even went in, they knew they were going to, they made a plan. They were going to do Freedom of Information Acts continuously to see what actions were occurring in their city. They were going to be making sure that all of the police and city staff are trained on how to interact with ICE to make sure resources aren't there, and I'm wondering, why have you not done that? We don't even know how many people have been taken. We don't know where they're going, okay? These people are being disappeared, and you continue to do nothing. Someone mentioned that you do care. Several meetings ago, Perez, you came out and said that if we were here at the beginning of the meeting, we would hear your comments. I listened to the public comments since June of all the meetings that you've done in. I've heard crickets. I've heard maybe a couple of you share some resources, but nothing about any statements about what you think is going on, how you feel about it. But at this point, I think you're okay with it, and that is shameful, and we're going to make sure the residents know where you stand on it, because none of you deserve to be sitting on those chairs if you're not going to be there standing with us.
Jack Cornejo, please. On you, Jack.
On October 18th, at our Norwalk Santa Fe Springs Transportation Center, myself and another senior citizen had a positive interaction with one of our public safety officers, a gentleman named Cervantes, badge number 45. He was helpful by providing critical information and reassurance to us while also being diligent to maintain peace and safety of the transportation center. So I'd like to publicly acknowledge that and amend him and have you know that he did an excellent job. Now, City Council, a more serious matter. Currently, for the advisory committee meetings, only the name of the person speaking is documented in the minutes. For the oral communication section, there is no description or synopsis of what the individual spoke on, whether it be positive. individual spoke on, whether it be positive, neutral, or negative. I asked that my comments be documented in the minutes, but was told that current policy does not allow that. Current policy can give the perception that city government does not want documentation of possible contrary or negative statements. It's important that there be openness and transparencies at all levels of government. It is important that any communication be documented for the public record. It provides a space for accountability by the speaker, city employees, and commissioners that are present. The two-way street of accountability. I need to be accountability for what I say to you, vice versa. It is requested a policy be implemented, or if necessary, a change in city ordinance that for any public meeting, city council meeting, advisory committee meetings, any oral communication, in addition to a person's name, an accurate synopsis of comments be documented in the minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jack. Next speaker is Brian Tenel.
Good evening, Council and staff. I apologize. I've been speaking for about two years now about the landscaping in the city, trying to raise awareness for more native trees and more biodiversity to help with endangered species and our own urban forest canopy. I know that city government moves slow. I've been very patient. I've been very polite. Maybe six, 10 months ago, there was an urban forest management plan that you guys paid, you guys paid $82,000 for that was supposed to be done three months ago. I reached out to every single staff member I can think of. Nobody will tell me what's in it. Nobody will tell me when it's coming. I don't know what you spent your money on. That is where I would like us to be, is to raise, is to put in more native trees. In the interim, maybe we could stop cutting down the trees that we have. That's politely where the bar is now, is stop cutting down your own urban forest. Last year, you cut down 285 trees. You planted 26. The Norwalk Park, you're putting in solar, which is awesome. That's very good. You cut down 14 trees that are probably 30 years old to put in that solar. Is there a plan to replace those trees? I've spoken to the city manager, who told me we try and replace one-to-one. A 40-foot tall tree is not replaced by a five-foot tall tree. So what is the plan to replace those? You've also lost 30% of your inventory on the last statistics. Has there been a reason why we haven't replaced those trees that are missing? So, if somebody would like to get back to me if the word "native" is in the urban forest management plan, or if anybody would like to show me it, as I am an expert in native plants, and I've been speaking at city government for 11 years, so you could argue I'm an expert in municipal urban landscaping, I would be happy to take a look at it. I'd be happy to point it to anybody else that I know is more educated than me. I don't know where you spent your money, because when I first looked at the request you made to West Coast Arborist, Urban Forest Management Plan is not in there. It's a computerized update to your inventory. And I think that's why it's been delayed. So, if someone would like to get back to me, or in the meantime, stop cutting down trees, thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker is Hein Rejab.
A middle-aged man is seen running down the street as if being chased by death itself. Two masked men are close behind. He runs into his apartment complex before the goons can catch him. They walk away in defeat because they know they legally cannot enter the man's home, probably because they don't have a warrant. As the agents walk away, you can see a señora across the street with her two kids looking over a truck and realizing in an instant exactly who these masked men are. He ducks behind a car, older children close, and hopes that the Gestapo thugs do not see her. This happened in Norwalk in July. Fast forward to about two weeks ago, a younger gentleman walks out of the same apartment complex. Outside, ICE agents are waiting. He tries his best to get back into the apartment, but to no avail. He is apprehended. Turns out, according to eyewitnesses, he was a son, he was the son of the middle-aged man I spoke of earlier. There is a family being targeted here in Norwalk, and a neighborhood that is now terrorized. I know that you are aware that this happened because the sheriffs were called by the panicked stricken neighbors, only for them to arrive 20 to 30 minutes later to tell them that there's nothing they can do. But you're telling me that they couldn't offer resources to the family? Not even a telephone number to Social Services? Now, we have been coming to every city council meeting since June, asking for the bare minimum. City council meeting after city council meeting, we came and asked the leaders of Norwalk to protect its community, and we have been met with silence. Now, there's only two explanations that I can come up with. It is either complicity, or it is cowardice. And I'm mostly directing that to you, Mayor Yala. I don't think I've heard, I don't think I've heard you utter so much as a word about the kidnappings happening in Norwalk. We've tried to come with stats and logical arguments as to why there must be measures taken to protect our community. I think we are beyond that now. I believe we deserve a new city leadership who are not afraid to take a stand with their community, because this has been a test of leadership, and you, Mayor Yala, have failed. I will reiterate our demands, though I have zero faith that they will be met. We demand a fund with a dollar amount included for families who have been affected by the raids. We demand that Norwalk become a sanctuary city, and we demand to know how you will be working with the state to enforce the newly passed laws, specifically the No Secret Police Act. Thank God that the state of California sees the gravity of the situation like we do. They've called a state of emergency due to the ICE raids. We hope you follow state law, although we all know you're a track worker when it comes to that.
Lizette Romano, you're up.
Good evening, City Council members. I want to start by saying thank you for following through on the bike lane on Excelsior. Bike lanes help us all. As somebody who bikes, I feel safer having more street visibility. You know, the cars see you when you're crossing the street. You don't have to worry that you're going to run into somebody on the sidewalk. People on the sidewalk don't have to worry that bikes are running into them. And, you know, as some of you may know, because I've been emailing, calling, and following up, I've also been looking forward to this bike lane as a way to control speeding in the area. So I know that a lot of us, as residents, we appreciate that you're making the streets safer for pedestrians, for other cars, for other residents in the area. And I know this is the third bike lane in Norwalk, and I'm hopeful to see this starting more in my area. It is close to the San Gabriel River Trail, so that is an important resource. And I also agree with the other commenter on the need for native plants and addressing climate change in that way, being mindful of what we're doing and how we're bringing back these environments that are needed to help us. And on another note, I did also want to raise awareness for Flyon Avenue, which is the street that's being heavily targeted. And I also saw the video of the masked men that, you know, kidnapped this man, and we don't know where they took him. I know that the mom that was kidnapped from that same street, she is still being detained. And unfortunately, these are families that are being broken apart. So I hope Norwalk can continue to brainstorm ways to improve safety in all ways possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizette. Thank you. Clara Barton.
Good afternoon, City Council and viewers online. I think it's important for local governments to track the amount of ICE raids and people detained, including how many US citizens or residents. Was it a warrantless arrest? Details about the tactics used, witnesses, and any additional information like the destruction of personal documents, children involved, personal property. We've heard people bring up the recent kidnapping in Norwalk where that family has been targeted. They also made the neighbors scared. They arrived with armed, they arrived armed. The police were very dismissive. They said there was nothing they could do. This isn't the first place. As a matter of fact, a few days later, this past Saturday, they targeted workers at the Home Depot across from Chirito's College, and they took seven workers, male and female, hard-working people who are just looking for ways to feed their family. Without evidence, we cannot build a strong case when it goes to court. But beyond that, it is severely neglectful not to collect this data and help ensure that family members have been contacted and can have access to legal services. It's important for the city of Norwalk to publish, to publicly establish no ICE zones. This includes all city-owned property and any private business that wants to be considered a no ICE zone. ICE agents would not be able to enter without a warrant, cannot stage or conduct investigations without a warrant. We just heard reports of Outback Steakhouse being used as a place to stage weed. Don't have confirmation if someone was taken or not. That's right there. I don't know if any of you have looked in the mirror lately, but you guys qualify for the things that make you eligible to be stopped by an ICE agent. You should be concerned for your family, Vice Mayor Perez. Have you seen what your children look like? Your husband, maybe? They're in danger, just like everyone in this room. They will not stop. It is also important to have rent moratoriums and financial support to protect at-risk individuals during this time. This is a proactive approach. The impact of being detained by ICE is both physical, financial, and psychological. When a person is detained, it takes away a core contributor to a community that may already be at risk. Our local economy is also being impacted. We have our farmer's market here on Tuesdays. Have you seen it? It's a graveyard. Everyone's being impacted, your neighbors, your community, the people you represent. The vendors are scared. The vendors are asking where, what they're supposed to do if their people who come and support them are not out here supporting them. They are the core of this community. I think I mentioned it before, a society is judged by how it treats its most vulnerable. How will you treat your most vulnerable, besides using them for PR scams and to stand for pretty photos, only when it's convenient?
Sophia Palafax. Come forward. Sophia.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and members of the community. My name is Sophia Palafax, and I'm proud, and I'm proud to speak to you tonight as a board member of the Southeast Academy Booster Club, representing Southeast Academy High School, located right here within the Norwalk-Lamarada Unified School District. For those who may not know us, Southeast Academy has proudly served students for over 26 years. Since 2009, we've been a part of this school district, and we've recently transitioned into the John Glenn High School complex. Tonight, I'm here to formally reintroduce our school and our dedicated booster club, which serves our cadet student body and supports the mission of Southeast Academy. We'd like to warmly invite all of you to our second annual drunk or treat event happening this Friday at 5:30 PM on the Southeast Academy campus. We'll have food, music, photo booths, and themed mazes, and of course, some incredibly creative trunks, thanks to the support of our parents and community. We still have a few spots open if any of you would like to join in on the fun, and we would love to have you there. In addition, we invite you to our Veterans Day Ceremony on Tuesday, November 5th at 8:00 AM, also held on our campus. It's a powerful event where we honor the courage, dedication, and sacrifice of our veterans. Our cadets will present marching and rifle demonstrations, and will offer personalized certificates to each veteran in attendance. It's truly one of the highlights of our year, in addition to our 9/11 ceremony that we also host. As our school continues to grow and deepen our roots in this vibrant city, we look forward to building lasting relationships within this community, and I stand here before you to extend that branch. If there are any students or families interested in what Southeast Academy has to offer, we invite you to give us a call and come tour our amazing campus. Thank you for your time, and we hope to see you soon at Southeast Academy High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. Always good to see you. We have Kylie, next person up.
Good evening. As you know, LA County officials recently declared a state of emergency over the ongoing ICE raids impacting our communities. Meanwhile, the city of Norwalk continues to do nothing to support our immigrant residents while they continue to get kidnapped. And I say this after months of doing our own fiscal, social, and community investigation. After speaking with members of the council in August, we were encouraged to reach out to Norwalk Social Services to find more about what they do to support the immigrant community. We were told the budget increased from this year to last, and that Norwalk already does a lot for their residents as a whole, including immigrants, which is why they do not need to take any action at this time. Due to this, we went to speak to Social Services directly. We spoke to community members who have been in need of support, and we reviewed Social Services fiscal budget for last year and this year. We found the city of Norwalk Social Services to be lacking in their support of our residents, a stark contrast to what the council has said. In speaking to community members, we found a glaring lack of knowledge and feelings of support from their city. We spoke to residents who have been scared to leave their homes since the summer, drastically changing their way of living. This has led to depression, anxiety, and other mental health concerns. This in and of itself should be of grave concern to you, that members of a community are experiencing mental health crises related to immigration concerns and are perpetuated by a lack of support. There was a study released in July of this year from the School of Medicine at the University of California Riverside, that found that the ongoing ICE raids have caused profound emotional harm in children that could be constituted as a public health crisis. Researchers know that trauma spans generations, and that trauma is familial, meaning that the trauma we are seeing now will have ripple effects for years to come in families. In other words, members of a community who you pledge to support and serve are experiencing a public, public health crisis, which you are actively choosing to ignore. This will continue to negatively impact the children and families of Norwalk. We also talked to people who have had no luck in accessing the supposed services that the council claims the city offers. They were provided a list of numbers to contact, some of which were disconnected, offered no case management, and told that the programs that would be of support, such as rental assistance, have been discontinued. The budget increase does not address any of these concerns. The increase in funds appears to have gone to wages, as it should, to address the cost of living, administrative costs, childcare, and senior center programs. That's all great, but it does not address the glaring needs of your community. If I, as a mom with a full-time job, could go out and assess community needs, you, as a city council member paid to serve the community, can do the same. Thank you.
Yeah, could I have a Norwalk resident, please?
I'm here to express my deep disappointment in everyone in the council, and I know that I speak for a lot of the people here, and not just the people here, but people that aren't here too, people that are scared to come, because some of us actually go and talk to the residents. I haven't heard from anyone that I've spoken to, that anyone from the city council or a city employee has done the same, because obviously, it seems like you guys really do not care. I don't know why you guys got into politics, and I think maybe that's a question you should ask yourself when you're on a city council of a majority Latino community, over 70% of the people that live here are Latinos. So I wonder, because I can't find the answer to that, why you guys even got into this line of business? If, when your community is facing something like this, you really have made no moves to even show that you care, not even in a way that, as a fake way to show that you care, you know what I mean? It's like, you can't even do that little bit, like, it's just little blog posts, you know, like photo ops that really have effect on nothing, but when something actually happens, and then you have the option to stand for what's right, you can't do that, you know what I mean? And then everyone here is Latino. It's crazy, because you guys should maybe talk to your kids one day and let them know that, like, when, you know, your community was facing something and you had the option to do something, you didn't want to do it. So, I'm just here to express that. Deep disappointment. So I'm just here to express that deep disappointment in all of you.
Anthony Armandares, please. Anthony Armandades.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and members of our wonderful community. On behalf of the Glazier Elementary PTA, I would like to extend a heartfelt invitation to join us for our second annual trunk-or-treat celebration on Tuesday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, right here at Glazier Elementary. This is one of our most anticipated family events of the year, a fun, safe, and festive evening, where our students, parents, and neighbors come together to celebrate the season. There will be decorated trunks, candy, and lots of community spirit. We are honored to have the support of our Parks and Recreation Department, Public Safety, and the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, who will be joining us that evening to help make this event both safe and exciting for our kids. Your presence makes a huge difference, and we are truly grateful for your partnership and commitment to our community. We are still accepting candy donations in the main office, so if anyone would like to contribute, your generosity will help make sure every child leaves with a smile and hopefully, a bag full of treats. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Kamora, something like that.
Good evening. My name is Kamora, and I want to speak tonight from a place of both concern and conviction, concern for our immigrant neighbors, and conviction grounded in the teachings of Jesus Christ, whom many of us in this city claim to follow. The actions of ICE raiding, separating families, detentions without due process do not reflect the values of compassion, mercy, and justice that Jesus preached. In fact, they stand in stark contrast. Jesus said, "I was a stranger, and you welcomed me." He did not say, "I was undocumented, and you deported me." He taught us to love our neighbors as ourselves, and to care for the marginalized, and to treat others as we would want to be treated. We are talking about human beings, mothers, fathers, children, who came here seeking safety, work, and a better future. Instead of finding welcome, they often live in fear. Many in our community have been directly impacted by ICE actions, fearful to go to school, to report crimes, or to even attend meetings like these ones tonight. As a city that values family, faith, and community, we must ask ourselves, do we stand by and allow this harm to continue in silence? Or do we speak up for policies that reflect the dignity of every human being, regardless of their immigration status? I urge our local leaders to take a moral stand. We are begging you to take a moral stand. While there is any remnants of a democracy left, make it clear that Norwalk will not cooperate with inhumane immigration enforcement practices. Advocate for policies that protect, not persecute, our neighbors. Let this city be known not for fear and exclusion, but for the radical welcome that Jesus himself modeled. You cannot live your life profiting off the backs of marginalized communities, and at the same time, believe you are destined for a spiritual promised land. When you look back on your life in the presence of God, not me, not activists, when you stand before God, will you be proud, happy, ashamed, regretful? "I was just doing my job" was not a sufficient excuse for Nazis at the Nuremberg Trial, nor will it be sufficient enough to grant your salvation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Karen Spillsbury.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager, Mr. Gomez. Couple of things I just wanted to remind everybody about. You mentioned earlier the Chick-fil-A fundraiser tomorrow, and there's two more coming. So next Wednesday, we'll be back to Mr. Rosewood's Family Restaurant, raising money for breast cancer awareness. And next Thursday, we'll be right across the street at Don's Teriyaki Grill, also fundraising for Paint the Town Pink. So we encourage you and everybody in the community to head on out to both those restaurants in addition to Chick-fil-A tomorrow. And then I just want to reiterate what I shared at the State of the City, that we thank the city of Norwalk for their ongoing partnership and commitment to support the business community. We appreciate the opportunity that you have given us for many years now to attend this event and to share information about the businesses and what's going on in our community. And we just thank you all for the support and ongoing partnership that you've had for the chamber. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Very much appreciated. Okay, I see no other cards. We're adjourned.